I'll call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting for Thursday, July 20th, 2017. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President Souths.
Here.
Trustee Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Jisa.
Here.
Trustee Lumsden.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Setteby.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Village Attorney Molina.
Yes.
Also President Village, Lord Haley.
Thank you very much. If you'll please rise for the pledge.
(inaudible) and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome all who are here with us tonight and those of you watching at home. If you are here with us and you'd like to address the board at any time, I just ask that you be recognized by the President and that you make your comments from the podium so that the folks at home can see and hear what you have to say. First up this evening, our presentations and public comment. Would anyone like to address the board? Mr. Galloch.
Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, those in attendance, and to those watching at home. Sir, I come before you and the Village Board tonight on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. It is my privilege to inform the public of our upcoming event this weekend, which is Riverfest, our third annual summer fun time in the park. It'll start at 3:00, and we will have all sorts of great things going on for the whole family. Kids will have bouncy houses, they'll have a slide, an obstacle course, train rides. We'll have just about every restaurant vending at that event as well. La Barra, Molly's, Choo Choo, and Peñadas, The Masons, Tropical Snow Cones, Aunt Diana's will be there before they reopen next week, and Fruit Smoothies. The new Hair-to-Go place is gonna have some fun things for the kids. They'll have hair spiking and coloring. I guess adults could take part in that as well. There will be raffle prizes for zoo memberships, the Blackhawks-Cubs games, all sorts of things going on. So, our band Midnight starts at 3:00. They'll play until 10:00. And, you know, with so many vendors there, we'll ask that everyone not to bring any outside food or beverages in. And I would see everyone there. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Hello. Brian Carroll, Molly's Public House, 3147. I'd like to bring up in front of the village again something that was visited back in November of 2015 about possibly potentially bringing gaming into Riverside. And I'd like to see if we can maybe revisit that issue and come to a vote. I believe where that was left was there was a forum that was done on it. The EDC, I don't believe, ever reached a formal opinion at that time, and I don't think we ever heard from the Chamber of Commerce either. So, what I would suggest is to have the Economic Development Commission revisit this and issue a recommendation to the board, and then maybe we could also get an opinion from the Chamber of Commerce, and then we can take it from there. How about that? Okay. Sounds good. Great. Thanks for your time. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Next up are reports of village officers. The village president's report. First up is a motion to appoint Jaclyn Miller to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill a vacancy term to expire 2020. You have her resume before you, and I think her qualifications speak volumes. I think she'll be a wonderful addition to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So with that, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Pollock, second by Mr. Lumsden. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Just as, since we're talking about commissions, I would like the public at large to know that we have openings on the Economic Development Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and also the Landscape Advisory Commission. So if anyone out there is interested in serving the village in one of those commissions, you can get a volunteer board application on the website, and that will be submitted to the village office, and then I and the relevant chairs would be in touch with you to talk more about your interest in the commissions. So I hope you will take that into consideration. That is all I have. Ms. Manager.
I have a couple of items. The movie In the Park that is sponsored by State Representative Mike Zaleski has been rescheduled for August 17th. That's due to the predicted rainfall, and also, obviously, it's very wet over in the park already. Additionally, I wanted to provide an update on various capital projects that are occurring within the village. The first item is the 2017 paving project. All concrete work was completed as of last week, including the sidewalk replacement program. All streets were milled and patched last week. The level binder was installed on all streets this week. You will notice over on East Avenue, the bump out that was previously there has been removed, and new asphalt's been installed in that surface. Asphalt resurfacing was scheduled for tomorrow. However, it's been postponed because we were notified of a water line that was to be installed, and so we weren't going to put down new asphalt for that to then be ripped up from a new water line service. So that has been delayed. However, once that installation is complete, we'll coordinate with our contractor to get them out to finish the resurfacing, and then pavement markings and crosswalks will be installed shortly thereafter. Landscape restoration is currently underway as well, and sod installation will be done likely in September due to weather conditions. With regard to the First Division Sewer Project, the Stage 1 is complete and restored. Concrete restoration has been completed along Stage 2, which are Fairbank and Berrypoint, as well as part of Stage 3 over on East Scottswood. Pavement patching of these areas will be completed early next week, and will be followed by landscape restoration. Stage 2 work along Blooming Bank is progressing, and will continue west of the Swim Club down Blooming Bank next week. And overall, the construction is on schedule as well for an anticipated completion date of early October. And then, a couple of items to note. Obviously, vehicle sticker enforcement is now in full force. Just to update the board, to date, we have sold 60 cat licenses, 473 dog licenses, and 5,241 vehicle stickers. And we also are noticing an increase in residents purchasing their vehicle stickers online. Thirty-one percent of payments made were made via e-pay or our Dropbox, which residents leave in the front of the Township Hall. And finally, the last item is the Fire Department accepted delivery of the new boat, which the board approved previously. The new boat is thirteen and a half feet inflatable rescue boat manufactured by Wing Industries. This boat is replacing a 20-plus-year Zodiac inflatable rescue boat. Both boats were similar in function. The new boat, however, has an Evanrude, and I'm sorry, this is obviously very technical language, 30 HP Impeller Jet Drive motor with electric start, which will allow the boat to operate in shallow water. And actually, I've seen it in operation. The Fire Department has already done training on the new boat, so if they need to utilize it for any purpose in the near future, they're already equipped to do so. Additionally, we are monitoring river levels very closely. We have been for the past two and a half weeks, and if there is any reason we need to send out an eflash notification to residents with regard to flooding, we will do so. But we're just closely monitoring it at this point, and that's all I have.
Any questions? Any questions? Evanrude.
It's the right.
Did I pronounce it correctly?
That was good.
It's the right vehicle to help our prior company do anything.
Okay. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. On the agenda tonight, approval of the voucher list of bills July 6, 2017, approved Village Board of Trustees' Executive Session minutes for May 18th and July 6, 2017, approved the Village Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting minutes July 6, 2017, and file and review the following: Community Development Monthly Report, June 2017, Fire Department Monthly Report, June 2017, and Police Department Monthly Report, June 17. Also, a motion to approve a special event application for Riverfest to be held in Centennial Plaza on this coming Saturday, July 22nd, and a resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside. I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Lumsden, second by Mr. Ballerine. Please call the roll on A through H.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Ballerine.
Aye. We're talking about the boat and the motor that we just replaced. And it just says that if we can't sell it, we're gonna dispose of it. I would not wanna, I don't think we should be disposing of it. It's either gonna sell it, or we're gonna hold it and try to sell it again. I'd hate to, go ahead.
We've already received significant interest. We will be listing, once it's declared a surplus, we'll be listing it on iBid, where individuals, it's similar to like an eBay, except it's for municipal property. And we've sold a significant amount of property just this past year that was declared a surplus. So it's a competitive process, and then whoever has the highest bid prevails, and then they'll be able to pick up the boat. So that's our intent.
So it will be, it's gonna be.
We will list it probably tomorrow. It's my anticipation. So if there are residents that are interested, they can submit a bid.
So iBid is available to all people? It's not municipal?
Yeah. For purchasing, for listing, it's municipal.
Okay. So I ask for a motion and second to approve item I.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Ballerine, second by Mr. Lumsden. Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up are reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? You know, under that section, Trustee Ballerine and I were talking earlier this week. You'll remember at the last meeting, we had discussed the various trustee liaisons. And I am curious as to whether there would be an interest in doing an experiment for six months, a year, to see if we can forego the trustee liaisons. And the reason I bring this up is, under our current, the current way we're doing things, we have staff members at every single commission. So I'm wondering, I mean, the trustees are already committing two nights a month to these meetings, and with your liaison responsibilities, that adds another two meetings a month, which seems to me to be a little bit onerous for folks who are working and raising families. So, obviously, there's nothing to preclude any trustee from ever going to any meeting that he or she wants to, but in terms of a formal liaison, what is your, what are your thoughts about that?
I don't think, I don't think it's that good of a start.
I think that's the only one, right? Historical is the only one. That's right. Historical is the only one. I mean, I'm fine to keep it the way it is and continue forward, but I just thought of bringing it up as an idea.
I mean, I know what I do. I look at the agendas, and if there's something on it that seems to be there, or if they call and say, "We'd like you to come," there you go.
And that's a really good point, because typically, you know, if there's something that's coming up that there's questions about, you know, Jessica or I get a call from the chairperson anyway. And so, I don't know how much value is added in terms of having the trustees there.
Maybe we give it a test out, like a test, and then when there's something, a hot topic, then we join if we wanna join. I kinda think it's nice that they have someone to go to on the board, though. I guess they can go to anyone else at any time.
I mean, I'm fine to leave it the way it is, and just do, you know, just do like what you're saying. The trustees can monitor what's going on, and if you think you need to go, go. If you think you don't, then don't. Looks like that's a preference.
And I think the other part of this is now that we're televised in the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, that's very, very helpful, because their minutes get, used to get pretty in-depth. So you'd have to have a trustee at those meetings, but now you can watch it.
Okay, well, I'll have.
We all end up watching that one now.
Yeah, everybody watches. Okay, well, I'll have the liaisons then, at the next meeting, and we'll keep it the way it is. Okay, next up are, are there any other liaison reports? Next up are ordinances and resolutions. First is an ordinance amending Section 862 Water Service Charges and Section 879 Sewage Service Charges for the Village Code of the Village of Riverside. Ms. Jones.
Recently, there seemed to have been a change from the village, and we're hoping to increase our water rates by approximately 2.5%.
Okay. And what about the sewage?
Currently, the combined usage rates make up approximately 34%. They cover the operating for the Water and Sewer Fund, which is about 34%. The usage rates, it represents 41% for water cost, and about 24% of the remainder goes to capital and debt service, is what that usage rate pays for.
I'm sorry, can you repeat those numbers?
Sure. So, the usage fees cover all of our operating costs. That's about 34%. Forty-one percent of that usage rate is water cost, and about 24% of it goes to capital and debt.
Any other questions?
As I always do when we talk about water, I like to make sure, always make sure the public understands that it's the enterprise fund. That means that everything they pay goes back into the water system. The money doesn't go for any other project except those expenses related to providing water to the residents. So, and in this case, if I understand it correctly, we're just increasing it by the amount that we're being increased. We buy it from McCook, and so when they increase their fees, we need to increase our fees, whether we like it or not. Otherwise, the fund is going to collapse, and we won't have enough money to maintain the infrastructure in the fund, because it's all self-contained fund. So, you know, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve if it's appropriate.
Yes. Motion by Mr. Pollock, second by Mr. Jisa. Any other questions?
I really appreciate the billing rate analysis that was provided for tonight. How do we explain the discrepancy between our costs and our neighboring villages? It's exorbitantly more expensive here. Is that, are they subsidizing it? Are our costs higher? Are we getting our water from different sources? How do we explain the difference here?
I know several other agencies are looking to increase water rates as of January 1st, so some of it is a timing issue. I know one of the other agencies that currently uses McCook is looking for other options on where to buy water from, to see if that can save any costs. I think another portion of it is, we only charge one residential water rate. In some of the other communities, they have a commercial water rate, which is higher and helps give a lot more to the fund.
Which of the surrounding communities use McCook water or Chicago water?
I don't, I would have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Because I have heard that there is starting to be a trend away from using Chicago water. Not that that's even feasible for us. I don't know what's feasible and what's not, but I know some other villages, I think particularly up north, are banding together for, you know, back to well water. But something I think we need to understand, I mean, I'd love to know whether the difference is in our rate, or in our operations, or in our capital and debt, or if we're just charging what it costs and others aren't. I think we need, I think I'm supportive of what we're requesting tonight, but I think if we're gonna suggest even more of a fee for an infrastructure charges, we need to get our arms around that.
I can do a little bit more research into what the other communities, what that make up.
That would be great.
I guess.
I think a factor in that, too, is what's their reserve fund in that, in their water? Because I know some villages will really not have enough money in reserve to maintain their infrastructure, and maybe they could do a special assessment, or a bond or something when they do infrastructure projects, because I can't imagine how North Riverside has much of, I don't know, maybe they do, but, yeah, it'd be hard to have much of a reserve fund at 677 a month when you're buying the water close to that.
And if you recall, at a certain point in North Riverside, their general fund was subsidizing their Water and Sewer Fund. So there is that as well. So we'd also have to check in to see which ones, some communities have a Water-Sewer Combined Fund, others have their sewer component as part of their general fund, and then the water is standalone. So making sure that we have information relative to that as well.
Okay. I would like to see more analysis on that.
I will say, North Riverside's rate does look very, much smaller as a usage rate. They also charge a bi-monthly $30 infrastructure fee, because they do not charge a sewer fee.
Okay. So we'll get.
Thank you.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is an ordinance amending the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to metal roofs, Director Act.
Yes, we had a request for a text amendment to allow metal roofs as a permitted building material in our residential zoning districts. Currently, any sort of metal cladding is permitted as a predominant finished material in our residential districts. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on June 28th regarding the matter, and the Preservation Commission also reviewed the proposed amendment last week. Currently, we don't, as I said, we don't allow any sort of metal cladding in our zoning ordinance for predominant finishes, so whether it's siding on the building or on the roofing. So we have not historically allowed people with non-metal roofs to be able to replace their roofs with metal roofs. So the petitioner, Mr. Bennett, requested a text amendment to be able to allow any residents to take advantage of being able to have a metal roof. The commissioners, the Planning and Zoning Commission were generally in favor of allowing the metal roofs. They did discuss colors. However, it was decided that since we don't currently regulate color for any other sort of building material, they did not want to add in that particular restriction. The commissioners were happy that this was kind of a green, energy-efficient, and durable material that we would be allowing our residents to be able to use. The proposed amendment would restrict it to either metal shingles or the standing seam metal types of roofs, so it wouldn't allow like a corrugated metal roof to be put in. So it is a little bit restrictive in what options you have, still be a higher quality product. You have before you the proposed amendment with the new language, some of the background material, there's some pictures of existing metal roofs. As I said, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of it. The Preservation Commission found that it would not have a negative impact on our national landmark designation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
So before we discuss it, could I have a motion and second to approve?
So.
Motion by Mr. Setteby, second by Mr. Lumsden. Questions and discussion? Prickets?
I have one question. With regard, they talked about the color. Did they talk about material other than just these two different types? You talked about corrugated metal.
Right. I mean, there's a few different types of metals. So you can have, kind of like your, like when you think of like a barn, or like more industrial buildings, and they have the kind of like wavy metal. So that is not listed as a permitted material. So metal siding of any type, like on the house, still would not be allowed. The exception then only allows for the metal shingles or tiles for roofing, or the standing seam metal roofs, which is some of the examples that you saw in those pictures. So those would be the only allowable types of metal roofing materials allowed in the code, so.
Okay. So then, but like the type of material that's used as well, like a copper versus, that's not been.
No, that would be up to.
Up to the homeowner.
Exactly.
So if there's certain types of metal that might be higher quality or lower quality, that's up, but can be put into these metal tiles or.
Right.
The metal standing seam, as long as it can be used in that.
Yes. So as long as it meets kind of like building code threshold levels for being approved building material, we're not getting more specific than that. So, you know, if somebody wants to do, you know, an aluminum sort of steel metal roof, it's colored, you know, that's, they're becoming much more common. A lot of the other communities don't have any rules against them. They can look very high quality, but we're not necessarily gonna say you can only do that if you're gonna be doing it in copper. You know, we're not, we're not getting into that level of restriction.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Ballerine.
Thank you.
Last, ordinance amending the Village Code of the Village of Riverside relative to abandoned and inoperable vehicles. Chief White.
Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, and manager Francis. The amendment that's in front of you is really a cleanup from, go back to 2007, for when we lost some of our abandoned and towing ordinance by adoption of a, another resolution. So what had happened recently is my staff came to me, an abandoned car that was in a public parking lot, and we didn't feel we had the authority under the current ordinance to tow it for safety reasons. This car was inoperable, had windows broken, had some tire problems, and was in the lot for an extended period of time. So I worked with Attorney Mars to clean up the ordinance. It gives us a little bit more authority after seven days to tow a car from either our municipal parking lot, the street, or in some cases, a private residence if it's deemed a hazard. We still have to follow rules for pre-towing notice and post-towing notice. So the registered owner would be given a seven-day notice unless we deem it a hazard, immediate hazard, like a car that would be abandoned on the street that would cause something that we needed to move it right away. There's just a few minor changes in the drafted ordinance, but it really is so that we can tow these vehicles when they become either aesthetically an eyesore, or they become more of a hazard, that we've seen lately, that some people, in this case, parked in one of our public lots and just abandoned the car and gave it up. It didn't run. It had been rummaged through by other kids and stuff that had gone through it in a period of time. We did end up removing it after a period of time, but we thought that the period of time was too long, and we wanted to make sure we had broader authority. So the changes you see in red in the outline are the ones that Attorney Mars worked with, myself and our staff, to bring a little tighter ordinance that gives us wider authority. And it's pretty standard practice. This towing and abandoned vehicle ordinance is adopted by many municipalities. We're not breaking any ground here. We're just updating ours from 2007.
So before we discuss, could I have a motion and second to approve? Motion by Mr. Setteby, second by Mr. Lumsden. Questions and discussion? Prickets?
I have one question. With regard, they talked about the color. Did they talk about material other than just these two different types? You talked about corrugated metal.
Right. I mean, there's a few different types of metals. So you can have, kind of like your, like when you think of like a barn, or like more industrial buildings, and they have the kind of like wavy metal. So that is not listed as a permitted material. So metal siding of any type, like on the house, still would not be allowed. The exception then only allows for the metal shingles or tiles for roofing, or the standing seam metal roofs, which is some of the examples that you saw in those pictures. So those would be the only allowable types of metal roofing materials allowed in the code, so.
Okay. So then, but like the type of material that's used as well, like a copper versus, that's not been.
No, that would be up to.
Up to the homeowner.
Exactly.
So if there's certain types of metal that might be higher quality or lower quality, that's up, but can be put into these metal tiles or.
Right.
The metal standing seam, as long as it can be used in that.
Yes. So as long as it meets kind of like building code threshold levels for being approved building material, we're not getting more specific than that. So, you know, if somebody wants to do, you know, an aluminum sort of steel metal roof, it's colored, you know, that's, they're becoming much more common. A lot of the other communities don't have any rules against them. They can look very high quality, but we're not necessarily gonna say you can only do that if you're gonna be doing it in copper. You know, we're not, we're not getting into that level of restriction.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
wrong, if he knows, is, is a situation that we deem to be hazard, but not, not in the middle of the street. Say we have a parking lot and it's parked in the corner, but we still think the kids shouldn't be playing, you know, should be gonna, we can tow that, you know, within seven days, we gotta send the pre-towing notice, then we have to send the post-towing notice. Thirty-day notice, from what my understanding is, actually, we can do that on private property too. It gives it a little bit more time, and is not a circumstance that would require us to move it under an emergency-type of situation. And I would, I would say that even in emergency, we could, we could forego the seven-day on a public street and remove it right then and there. So that was my understanding when I worked with Attorney Mars, unless Lance would have a comment that.
Is, is a thirty-day pretty, pretty common? It seems long to be.
Yeah, no, it is, you have to remember that an inoperable vehicle is a car that could really look, like a car without a registered plate, an expired plate is inoperable under the law. Because legally, you can't operate it on the rights of way in the state of Illinois. So you could have a car that somebody's just parked there for a long time, there's no evidence it's abandoned, because it's not, it doesn't look horrible, doesn't look like someone just, you know, left it. So, an abandoned vehicle is one that really looks like, it's, not only is it currently inoperable, it looks like it's gonna take a lot of effort to ever make it operable. So that's the difference. It's a, it's one of degree.
Okay. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Pollak.
Lance mentioned something that I was gonna ask about. Is a vehicle abandoned or inoperable? Do these definitions cover that unlicensed vehicle that's mechanically operational, but...
Well, you wouldn't necessarily know if it is, but inoperable means legally inoperable. A tire could be flat, the engine could run fine, but the tire's flat. Or it, it has no license plates, looks fine otherwise, or it has plates, but the plate is a year old.
Expired. Well, this doesn't cover that, though. This doesn't say anything about unlicensed.
Well, Attorney Mars told me that fell under the inoperable motor vehicle. So that, that umbrella for, it's, because it's not, you're not, can't legally operate it on the street in those.
Right.
Like if it's, if you have no plates, or, or the plates are expired over a year, then under the Illinois Vehicle Code, it's really abandoned, it's not operable.
I'm just wondering if we should include unlicensed in those definitions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this definition's a little narrower. Inoperable. Does not include any motor vehicles, that is kept within. I mean, my understanding was inoperable is a term of art that applies across the board, and it means it's not able to be legally operable. Yeah, I had that discussion with Attorney Mars, and that was his, that it's not legally, if you can't legally operate it on a roadway, it's. You'd be ticked if someone got into it and an officer saw them. That's.
Well, I'd like to offer an amendment.
We might as well say that, right?
We might as well say unlicensed, rather than leave it for someone to gas at. It may be covered elsewhere, but why not cover it here as well?
We, we could do that. Let me think about where it's seen. So can I?
We can, we can just, we'll find a place to put that phrase in.
Okay, absolutely.
Is that okay with Lance's up for?
Yes, we can. Subject to our addition.
Just figure out the right place.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Okay. Anything else? Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Sudaby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
So moving on now to considerations, this is a continuing discussion that we've been having about the possibility of having a connector, a Salt Creek connector, that would run through Riverside, come down First Avenue in front of the school, and then go through Riverside, connecting over to Ogden, and ended up over to Sirmack. So we've got some folks here, I think, that, that wanted to say a few words. One thing that I will say, I believe all the trustees got this, this email today, our, both our chief of police and our fire chief have both said that they feel strongly that any, any proposed route should go across a sig, single, single, signaled, signaled intersection. So that would pretty much mean going across Mill Bridge, going across the Berry Point Bridge, right there at Ogden. But I know we've got some folks that wanted to say a few words. Rob?
Hello, my name's Robert Dixon. I'm at four seventy-eight Uve Dale Road in Riverside. I'm also the president of the Olmstead Society, and some of my support for a bicycle route through Riverside comes as a resident, sort of a personally self-interested point of view, where, having moved here ten years ago, I've really not seen property values increase. And it's kind of a demonstrated fact that communities that have clear accessibility to a bike route are appreciating at a much higher rate than other communities. And there's a real desire of people to live within communities that are bikable and walkable. And Riverside presents a unique opportunity to be a connector between bike paths that are forming to the west of us, and then the connection to the Salt Creek Trail to the south of us in the portage. I know I've been in front of the board before, so you've heard my spiel. But I think that this is a very critical moment in time for Riverside to serve in this capacity. Over the past, I guess, twenty years or so, there's been efforts to move the bike path through Riverside, and this may be a more opportune time to do so, particularly as the trail's gonna, kinda dead-end there at RB High School. Now, in my capacity as the president of the Olmstead Society, there's a recognition among the board presently that Olmstead had a vision for recreation in the way of walking, walking paths, were a part of his original design. The majority of the board supported the creation of a biking, bike path subcommittee to promote this idea, to connect the bike, the Salt Creek Trail through Riverside. And so I'm here to, to share that endorsement from the Olmstead Society as well. Another, oh, just lost my train of thought there. But, in general, I think that the main benefit that we would see from coming ideally through forest, allowing people to see the central business district and the opportunities here, you know, ideally coming through the new space that Riverside Lawn is gonna become, that could be a major asset for Riverside. If we can bring people through that space on bicycles, we've got very low impact on the community. We don't have parking needs, we don't have sort of a carbon footprint of people coming through the space, noise. We'd also bring through families. People who are on the bike path on a regular basis are the people we wanna have coming through our community. So, in short, you know, I would strongly endorse the move to create a connector for the Salt Creek Greenway through Riverside. I've had the opportunity to speak with a longtime engineer who's been involved with the Salt Creek Greenway, from kind of its inception, David Landweir of Terra Engineering. And over the source of multiple conversations, he's talked about the importance of Riverside as a piece to connect the Salt Creek Trail. Options which they've explored in the absence of Riverside's engagement are really subpar. And they've tried to make that happen, but it would result in multiple crossings of Ogden, which don't really present a pleasant path, and also leave Riverside out in the cold. So I'm pleased that this discussion's ensuing with the trustees, and hope it can move forward.
So I had a question for you, Rob, Rob, you and I talked about this, the, the maps that the trustees have for some of the early suggestions about routes. And we had originally thought about the idea of it coming down west and then down pine, but then you, you noted to me that, that the problem with that is, under normal circumstances, it's gotta be a bike path that goes both ways.
Right.
And you can't go down pine. So the, the better route would be to come straight down forest to Long Common, and then take a right there. Now, in the discussions that you've had with your group, have you talked about the, because it seems like the, it's either gonna be Berry Point or Fairbank would be, would be the two routes. I should note to, to the board that at the last township meeting, they basically nixed the idea of it going across the Swinging Bridge for liability concerns. I hope that's not a completely dead idea, because that would, that would be a very attractive route, to go over the Swinging Bridge, because it's very direct, and it also, as Rob mentions, it takes you immediately into what's gonna be a forest preserve district over there in Riverside Lawn. But for the time being, that seems to be off the table. So were there any discussions about Berry Point versus Fairbank as, as the way through?
Well, you know, in, in discussions with David Landweir, and then with the group that's been considering this, the least number of left turns are seen to be advantageous in terms of bicycling and movement within traffic. You know, the, the avenue along pine, you're correct, people coming west would not be able to go down that road, because it's one-way east. And, so Berry Point probably would be the preferred route, because it would alleviate that left turn right at the Riverside Presbyterian Church, which at dusk can be a rather challenging intersection. And so going straight there, if that's your only option, hopefully the township will come back to the table to discuss some options of use of the bridge. You know, there are a number of crossings of waterways to the west of us that employ mechanisms, for instance, walk your bike, if they've got a narrow bridge, or, you know, things of that nature. However, if that's off the table presently, I think Berry Point would be the preferred route.
When this was brought up sometime, because you come out of thirty-ninth Street and it looks like you cross, noting what the chief and chief said, you're crossing Ogden Avenue, but there's no light where you're crossing Ogden Avenue.
That's the current crosswalk for the bike path right now.
Right.
Shakespeare, Shakespeare, you mean, down toward the west, or towards the east?
What if, what if we went down Riverside Drive and came out Miller, at the stoplight at Miller? Went across Miller at the light, and then got to the other side of Ogden at the light, and then you can just come up?
Well, it is one-way out that way, is it not?
Okay.
Toward, toward Ogden?
Okay.
And that's also a multi-lane thoroughfare. But it's, it's, it's one-way out.
It's one-way, okay.
I think the other thing, too, if we take a look at what we just did with our traffic setting, where the traffic guy advised where we would have a bike lane or those lanes, too, I think we need to kinda overlay these two, and see if there's similarities, and see if there makes some good sense on that. Because I know at, at that, when you're, when you're crossing from thirty-ninth Street to go across into where the Lions Pool is at, that intersection can get, I mean, people see it, it's, it's nice and open, so you can see it, but some people kinda blow it off, too, so.
Well, and I think that's why our chiefs were saying that the better, that the better crossing would be there, across the bridge, right onto Ogden, where there is a signal. Is that, that was your opinion, right, Chief?
Yeah, the, myself, Director App, and the Chief Buck, we talked about it at our Monday staff meeting, and that Shakespeare's very hazardous there. You, you see the piano crosswalk there, so we suggested either Miller, which we didn't think about to this one-way, or Berry Point and Fairbank, because of the signal at Ogden and Joliet. And we even brought up that maybe you could put those yellow flashers on, you see many municipalities have you pressed a button, but traffic's going pretty fast on Ogden, and so when you hit those, you're gonna have a lot of rear-end accidents. And if you've crossed there, you know how dangerous that can be to get over there, so. And there was some discussion that if it's a designated route already, that they may not be able to change, would they change it to what we, our suggestion was? So if county has the Salt Creek Connector, and they say it has to go to these streets, what would our alternative be? Our alternative is we should, we should suggest Berry Point or Fairbank, because we believe that's the safer route. That, that Shakespeare scares me over there, it's very, very, the cars are clipping along at thirty-five or forty on Ogden Avenue, so I would say that that's pretty dangerous for a, a way to cross.
Yeah, so just, so, just to pull up on that, just so everybody kinda knows where, where this process is, I mean, we don't know that any of this is very, I mean, the idea is, if, this is something that the board approves of, the concept, the, the next step would be to get involved with some of the, the county commissioners, Arnold Randall from the Forest Preserve District, and sit down with them and give them our idea to see if this is something that the, that the county would be willing to consider. So obviously, we don't have the capability of doing this. It would be, this would be a county designation for, for the Salt Creek Connector. I mean, we can, we can do anything we want to within Riverside, saying there's a path, but what we're looking for is getting on that county map.
Is there a possibility that, excuse me, I agree about Shakespeare, but is there a possibility that you can come, I love the idea of driving, riding through Riverside Lawn, that's where I go, and I go bike ride.
Yeah.
Could you not go through there and then take a right on thirty-ninth and go over to Joliet? Or is that mainly?
That's, that way you get to enjoy the woods. I, I don't know if that's, was proposed, or if the concern was the safety going over the Swinging Bridge, but if people, you ride on Bemis, a lot of times you, you get off your bike to.
I mean, that, I mean, they're, my understanding, the concern they had was the liability issues of people riding their bikes across the bridge.
The Swinging Bridge.
Yeah. And it would be, it would be a very straight route, it would get, you know, I mean, it would take you right into Riverside Lawn, but it's their bridge.
Yeah.
Have you anybody seen the new walk that they put on?
At Thirty-first Street, where the trail comes out on Thirty-first and cross onto the other side? I mean, you can't hit much busier of a street than Thirty-first Street and that stretch. And I run that way, so that's been a real, that's really nice, because it's, it stops people pretty easily. I don't know who put that in, whether it was IDOT, or whether it was the county, but that would be a, you know, for a dangerous intersection, that would be something that would be great to have.
Not only that, I mean, Shakespeare crossing at Ogden, it is challenging, there's no doubt. There's some challenge there, but certainly no more than what you see on the Salt Creek Trail now.
Right, exactly.
As you go cross those busy, those busy roads.
Wolf Road, cross Wolf Road.
So actually, Ogden, as you ride it, is arguably less challenging than some of the arterials to the west, so those, those busy roads. So, you know, it's not ideal, but bikes have a place. You know, bikes have as much right to be on the road as a car. You know, really, they do. And so crossing the street, a bike has a right to cross the street as does a pedestrian or anyone else. People come out of Shakespeare in cars, we're not concerned about that. And there's children in those cars. So it's sort of like, bikes can be where cars are, in large part.
Well, you know, as we talk about this, another, another, yet another moving part is if, if we went over the Berry Point Bridge and then onto Ogden, now that's Lions, so we would be taking the connector, that part going down Ogden until you turn back into the aquatic center, that would be, we'd have to get Lions involved. Whereas if you cross the Shakespeare, you're across, you're crossing your right.
Yeah, I don't think you could drive down that sidewalk in Lions.
Yeah, that, that would be a crazy, that's, that's hard to walk along.
Yeah. No, they'd have to be on, they'd have to be on the street.
That'd be tough. That's, riding on Ogden's tough.
And that's pretty.
Especially with the cars parked along Ogden, you know, the way they park there, and then, yeah, it's tough to get out of your car on that street. Yeah, the Shakespeare's not perfect, but you're a hundred percent right. There's, Wolf Road is, is terrible to cross, York Road is terrible to cross, but people...
Just take some patience.
People get across it.
It's not as bad as riding your bike through the city, but it's, it's challenging.
So I guess the question is for the board, is, is this something that you want us to move forward with, and have these meetings, and see if it's something that, that we can make?
I think there's a lot of support from the folks in the village, like yourself, to do what I do, or relatively obligated to participate.
I mean, obviously, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I do, too.
I don't see it as a bad idea.
Okay, then we will move forward with, with your blessing, then. Thank you. Rob, thanks for coming in, I appreciate it. Anybody have any new business? We don't have any for an executive session this evening, so I would ask for a motion a second. Motion by Mr. Lumsden, second. Mr. Jisa, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Sudaby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Motion carries. Thank you, good night.